I'm assuming we're ready in the back there with the video. So it's seven o'clock and I'd like to welcome all of you here this evening. This is a regular city council meeting in Manitrista for March 21st. Our first order is I'd like to ask if you have any electronic devices that you put them on airplane mode or turn them off. And then I'd like to ask that you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first I'll make a few introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Patricia Thole, Mark Vanderlinde, Pam Mortensen, Bob Christians. And then on the end we have our city attorney with W- city engineer with WSB, Paul Hornby, and our city clerk, Chris Lindquist. And then to my right we have our city administrator, Mike Belloni, our finance director, Brian Grimm, community development director, David Abel, our city attorney now with Kennedy and Graven, Ron Beatty, and then our chief of police or director of public safety, Paul Falls. So with that, we'll move to approve the agenda. Do we have any changes? Mr. Hornby?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I would like to request that we take item 6B off the agenda. This is for the professional services proposal for the Deer Creek culvert replacement. I did have a conversation today with staff and also with council member Vanderlinde. And there's a couple of different philosophies on replacing this culvert and perhaps provide some dollars for some other projects. So I think we're going to bring something back to the council at a future date.
Okay. And would that be like our next meeting? Because I know we want to do this this year.
Yeah, it, um, what I'd like to do is put this out for quotes.
Okay.
And bring quotes back, so it's probably going to be out about a month.
Okay. All right, just so we know. So that'll be back around the end of April then?
End of April or the first part of May.
Okay.
That'll leave plenty of time.
Plenty of time to do that, all right. Okay, so we'll take number 6B off. Is that okay with everyone? Are there any other changes, deletions, or additions? Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented, less 6B. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So next we'll move on to our special presentations and we have Pastor John Brayland with us this evening from the Freshwater Church located in St. Bonny. So welcome, Mr., our pastor Brayland. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you, it's an honor to be here. I had the privilege earlier today to open the House of Representatives in prayer. They called and asked if we'd come down, so I got to wear my suit for a twofer. So, it's an honor to be here. Before you, I've worked with many of you in the past and I know you and I worked together as a police chaplain for I think fifteen years, maybe, so great joy with that. Well, I'm here representing Freshwater Church and Freshwater Church is one church of multiple locations. We have a church in St. Boniface and another campus in Watcomia. We have about a thousand people that come on the weekends to our campus, probably fifteen hundred, seventeen hundred who call Freshwater home. We also have a learning center. We have between fifty and seventy-five children that come every single day to our facility in St. Boniface. And we employ about thirty-five people, I kind of want to strike on that, we have about thirty-five people that we gainfully employ, many of which live in our community. We have most, all of our members live within ten miles of our churches. So we are your community, we are your constituents, and we are the people that live and enjoy the benefits of a healthy city council. And so we're honored to be a part of that. And even though our church technically is in the city of St. Boniface, we certainly are a part of a greater community, as you know. And I want to speak, there's a number of benefits on why the nonprofit is certainly an advantage to have nonprofits in the community. Several reasons are those, it provides jobs for the community and supports local businesses because, as I said earlier, we have many people that attend our churches and also others that, you know, we live in the community. So we're able to shop and buy food and we've noticed significantly in Watcomia, after services, we flood the local businesses and the restaurants. And in St. Bonny, you know, we would overrun Mclemm Dunes or, you know, or take all the pizzas out of quick trip for holiday. Not a lot of restaurants there, but certainly Bob has seen benefit from that as well. Second is attractive component to families choosing to establish residence in a local community. Many people move to this area to be a part of our church. And they flat out said that. They shop us on the internet first, they find a church. If they're moving from the cities or somewhere else, they'll oftentimes shop our, one of our campuses. And then they move to the area because we have a church and because we have a learning center that provides for their children. Huge component of our church. And we certainly help providing social benefits. We provide help for poor and vulnerable individuals in the community. And we also invest in marriages, we invest in so many things. And that's just something that the nonprofit world does very well. We care for people, that's, that's what I do. And when people care business and as a church, we certainly want to do that, which has great benefits for the community. One of those benefits is lower crime. If we can have a healthier community, we have lower crime. We have healthier families, we have lower domestics, we have less divorce, we have less children who are struggling, teens, as we provide for so many families of teenagers. We provide a healthy place for them to grow and to learn. Also promote mental and physical health, definitely an advantage of having a church in a local, local area. Johnson and Ellison did a study on this. It said increased religious practice also is associated with decreased levels of depression and suicide. And having gone out on many suicides, both in this community as a police chaplain and just in other areas, I just get calls, the church certainly has an advantage in doing that. We train our staff every year on suicide prevention. And ironically, we trained out three weeks ago and the very next day we had a call from a constituent who lives in this community who was just about ready to end their life. And because of our training, we were able to step up and make a difference. And I think, you know, we're all able to go home at a reasonable time that day and the person's doing very well today. Without the local church, that wouldn't happen. We offer recovery programs to help individuals and families. We're open every day of the week at Freshwater for so many things, for recovery programs, Alcoholics Anonymous, Alcoholics Anonymous, as well as many other recovery programs. We have a furnace facility for families to gather for weddings, also for funerals, and we partner with the local community as an emergency shelter. And we've shared our emergency preparedness plan with the city of Manitrista. And I believe it is even on file now as we're part of the state response. And we just want to say, we want to help the community any way that we can. I know we're also a voting station as well. So there's many benefits to having a church in a local community. So I don't think there's anything controversial going on in the place of that. But in all of your planning, make sure that you do include room for a nonprofit. Because even though you don't see tangible dollars in your pocket, just in the numbers, you certainly see the benefits as more people in the community and they in turn invest in the community. And it takes discernment to know how to master plan the community, when to make exceptions and when to hold down and hold hard and fast to the rules. So thank you for your service. Thanks for being on the city council. Because you're investing in people, like myself, like my children, and like the people who call Freshwater home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And yes, I think we definitely appreciate all that your church and we have a couple others in our community definitely are an asset, as you stated, so no doubt about that. And it's also good to have this here and have you come so that it reminds us of all of the programs and things that you offer. And we have a brand new website, so maybe we can have a link to different NGOs in our community, which would be really nice, so.
Great, there's something we can help.
Okay.
John, one other thing, I understand, and I assume you're going to participate in Tristides with us again this year?
I have, what, with Tristides?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Love Tristides.
Because I think that's, last year was noticeable.
Mm-hmm. Great. Anything we can do to help, help this community, don't be afraid to ask us for resources either. We're more than happy to help the cities and whatever that might be, even if it's in funding for, or is it crime, crime?
Crime fund?
The crime fund, I know for that in the past or for other funding in the city of St. Bonny's come to us for different things, for the fire department, we're, we're happy to help, so don't be afraid to do that.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments?
No, I just have to say, I am a member of Freshwater and they have an incredible kids program. It's probably the best I've ever seen. So what he's saying is true. And yes, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes our special presentations this evening. So we have nobody under persons to be heard. So we'll move on to our consent agenda items. And that is number A, approve our work session meeting minutes from March 7th, approve our regular meeting minutes from March 7th, approve a resolution approving claims, a resolution approving payment of our temporary and permanent easement agreements for our water main project. These are the last two, I might say. So we are done with our easements. A resolution approving status change from probationary to full-time for Chris Lindquist. And also, by the way, congratulations, she did, was voted in as the treasurer for the organization, so kudos to you and congratulations. And next is F, approval of our street sweeping contract agreement. And then G is approve our preventative maintenance agreement with Ready Watt Electric for our outdoor warning sirens. Are there any changes or deletions? Otherwise, it would be consent agenda A, B, C, D, E, F, and G as I read. I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Before we move on to our business items, we have no public hearings, I do want to say thank you to Kennedy and Graven and our, the wonderful work that Doc Sheftell did on the easements. We had ten easements, so that wasn't very many. Some of them were a little more difficult than others. He worked very hard on it. He did an excellent job and I think he took the council's direction to try and get this done without condemnation. So all of them are done without condemnations. Congratulations and thank you very much for your wonderful work on this.
Madam Mayor, thank you for those comments and I'll pass that on.
Thank you. So now we'll move on. Like I said, we have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to our business items. So we have business item A, it's a proposal for professional services for the 2016 pavement management improvements. I believe, Mr. Hornby, I think you're going to be on the agenda quite a bit this evening.
It's starting to look like an engineering agenda. Mayor and members of the council, good evening. In your packet is a memorandum for the 2016 pavement management program. That includes a mill and overlay project and also includes a crack fill and seal coat project. I should note that the crack fill and seal coat also adds a new item in it is fog sealing of some of the city trails. And so that's a, we use fog seal on the trails because if you put the rock in it, people are roller glating, the rock tends to be a lot rougher, number one, for the ride, and then if you fall, it's a, it can make more, have more damage to skin than, than just a smooth surface can.
Okay.
So that's a fog seal project, so we're going to do our first trail improvement with that project. Professional services proposal was from WSB and Associates. The first road maintenance fund provides $150,000 this year for the work. About $75,000 of that is for the crack fill seal coat project and the remainder is for the mill and overlay project. The professional services in total is for $20,000. It's $12,500 for the mill and overlay and $7,500 for the crack fill and seal coat. And staff does recommend approval of that and there's a resolution in your packet that will be resolution, I lost it.
Um, 53-16.
53-16.
And I'm not sure what page it's on.
Yeah, on page 64.
Are there questions of staff?
Um, not questions, but just a comment in that, or a couple of comments. In looking at the map and those, the roads that were highlighted, it didn't look like there were very many roads that are going to be addressed. And if we want to make any kind of progress, I hope that next year we are able to commit to and follow through with the hard work of the road commissions, identifying the various roads that need improvement. I think it is one of the goals of our city, it's one of the desires of our residents based on the survey that was taken a number of years ago. And I am hoping that for next year's, in September, well, next fall, when we're discussing the budget, that we are willing to put in that additional $100,000 that the road committee had identified adding each year. If we want to get serious about improving our roads, we need to commit to it, so.
And kind of on that same vein, I did have a discussion with Mr. Hornby today. And last year we came in under budget for our, I don't know how many dollars it was, maybe Brian can help me out. So my question was to Mr. Hornby was, if we came in under budget this year, are we then able to add an additional road or segment of a road or something so we can use up all of those funds?
And we'll look at that, Brian and I'll take a look at that and see where we, where we fell last year and then see if there's another roadway we can either add to, likely the seal coat program for this year.
So that'd be for this year's budget versus not, not for 2017, you're wondering if we could add something in this year?
For this year, if we can add something in this year, yeah.
Funds are under budget, so, okay.
Because I know we were under budget for that. It wasn't a lot, I think it was like 30,000 maybe?
Yeah, I don't have a dollar check yet, it was, I think a little bit, yes.
Okay. So I mean, if you can just look at that, then we can do maybe more this year than we anticipate.
Okay.
And Mr. Hornby, just a point of clarification, Serenity Hill, if that goes in, the, the road that they would be looking at doing a potential turn and expanding and putting a turn lane in there, that's, that's the county road, so.
Correct.
That's, nothing would be coming out of our budget for that?
No, and then they would build the roadways within and adjacent to, so Halsted and then there's a new road coming into it that they would, they would construct with the development.
Okay, great, thanks. But with that being said, we have to look at all of the new roads that are coming online because currently we have, as you saw in your packet, 43.6 miles of paved roads and we're just adding more and more. So we, we do need to keep on top of it.
Out of this project that we're talking about here, 100% of, 100% of the dollars for this are coming from out of our budget. There is no assistance or help from either the county or assessments to the homeowners where we'll be improving the roads going by, is that correct?
Correct. There's no assessments and there aren't any other funds, other than the city's local funds.
Correct, yeah. Basically a combination of the tax dollars and then our, some of our road maintenance funds we get allocated by the state, is that correct?
Correct.
Just wanted to give clarification that the assessments, that there are assessments?
No, correct.
We're being very nice.
Well, I think we have, we have an assessment policy and the policy states that when it's a seal coating or an overlay, I don't think that there's an assessment. When it's a reconstruct or a pavement of a gravel road, then there's some assessments. So that's according to our policy.
So, good.
Okay. Um, are we done? Did we do a motion?
No.
Okay. All right, so any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, then I'm looking for a resolution for number 53-16 and it's a proposal for the professional services for our 2016 pavement management improvements.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Um, wow, that was a tie. All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll say Patricia seconded that. Mr. Vanderlinde made the, made the motion and Ms. Thole seconded that, so. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Then we'll move on to number C, since B will come back to us in April or May. We have a proposal for professional services for Enchanted Lane Street improvements.
Mayor, members of the council, this is another project for a capital improvement plan for Enchanted Lane. We did have an informational meeting last year. This was, I think there were some council members involved with that meeting or attended that meeting and also residents along the route. And a lot of the discussion was, I think there's 27 properties along that route. And the previous capital improvement plan had about $1.2 million associated with this project and there's a lot of difficulties in constructing it. And constructing a new residential street to the city standard probably isn't practical there for a number of reasons. So talking to the residents, we determined at that time that was probably best to look at this as a reclaim project that would also provide some fill in the floodplain that would try to address some of the more frequent seasonal flooding areas. And oftentimes, you know, there's a area, especially on the outside lane, that seems to get, hold water quite a bit and that, we raised that grade to help keep those areas dry during normal conditions. If we did have another, you know, event, precipitation events like we had in 2014, we'd have a similar situation where we have some flooding out there. But this is kind of a, this is a good solution to get us out of, you know, some of the more seasonal type flooding projects since we're basically just going to be a reclaim project. The proposal for professional services is in your packet and it is for feasibility report and the preliminary design for the project. As we did on the Halsted project, we're recommending that the consideration of approval, we have some optional items, one of them being a topographic survey and the other one being a wetland delineation, that we maybe do that if it goes forward to final design. You know, provide the feasible report to you, you know, using contours and estimates of where those wetland boundaries are and the, and the water boundaries are. And that'll give us a good, and add some contingency and that'll give us a good idea of where the cost of the project's going to fall. And with that, the professional services is for the amount of.
Thought it was 12, was it 12,000?
It's 23,000, I'm saying, totally.
Right, it's 12,751 for the floodplain assessment, wetland impact, preliminary design. The optional services were 10,995 and that's what we can keep out, so it'd be 12,750.
Mm-hmm, for the preliminary design?
Correct.
Okay. And is there any savings in doing the wetland assessment now versus later?
Generally, when you do the wetland assessment, you have a two-year window once you have approval.
Okay.
So what I would do is if the council decides to go forward with final design, that'll occur, you know, sometime, the feasibility report will be done in the next few months if, if awarded. So we'll start that work, you know, after the final design, we'll have plenty of time this summer to do that, or, excuse me, after the preliminary design, we'll have plenty of time to do that ahead of final design and get that approved.
Okay.
It's pretty obvious where the wetland is and where the floodplain is, so.
And we wanted to do this next year, the same in conjunction with Halsted, so.
Correct.
Want to make sure we time it right.
Correct. And then there'll be another project you'll be getting, probably later this summer, early part of fall, we'll bring Grandview back, it's a very simple project of this. Funding's been set aside by a developer in part and it's been, so that's another one that came from, I think got moved up to 2017.
Right.
So there is a resolution in your packet and that number is 55-16 and that's on page 80. And staff does recommend approval at 12,750.
Okay, and Mr. Hornby, just to be clear, the optional tasks, the additional 10,995, it's not really optional whether we're going to do it, it's optional whether we're going to do it now or wait until just before.
Correct. If, after we go through the feasibility report and the public process that the council wants to go forward to final design, then you would have to do both the wetland delineation and the topographic survey.
Okay.
Correct.
And then Paul, just one more question. It talks about a neighborhood meeting. Do you have any timeline for that?
I don't yet, but I generally like to do is bring at least a draft of the feasibility report back to the council. I'd rather bring that back to the council, not bringing that to the public before council members have had a chance to see it. So I'd like to bring a draft to the council, we can set up public information meetings after that.
Okay.
And then bring a formal feasibility report back if there's any modifications that we have.
And approximately any timeframe for the draft feasibility report back to us?
I think this one we'll be looking at about same timeline, middle of probably the first or second meeting of May should be.
Okay, so May timeframe, okay. Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve professional services for the Enchanted Lane Street improvements. This would be for a feasibility study in the amount of 12,752, 54?
51.
51.
51.
Sorry. So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
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 I'm sorry, Mark, did you say aye?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Aye. Okay, that is five zero then, all those opposed, motion passes. All right, thank you, I just didn't hear everybody. Next we have business item number D and that's approve our designations for the comprehensive plan update steering committee. We had a list in our packet. Mr. Abel, do you?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We are looking to appoint members for a steering committee that will review public feedback and help lead the process as we go through our 2040 comprehensive plan update. We asked our parks commission and planning commission if anyone was interested in volunteering for this steering committee. We did get two members from each, we've got Mike Molitor from the planning commission along with Peter Vickery. And then on our parks commission, Gary Vars and Patty DeKoski volunteered to serve on the board. Council also expressed interest in asking residents at large to submit applications to be part of the commission. And we did advertise several weeks in the paper as, as well as our website and did receive the applications that are listed, I'll read through the names who submitted an application. Mary Ann Hoppy, Craig Moody, Ralph Harrison, and Thomas DeVoe all submitted applications. It would be staff's recommendation that you, the council, pick someone from the council to also sit on the steering committee and then appoint the names that I previously mentioned to serve on the steering committee. They will meet monthly, the fourth Monday of each month at 5:00. There is a tentative schedule that was attached as part of your packet. There will be packets similar to your council packets that'll go out the Friday before that their meeting that they'll need to look at and review. And the meetings will likely be held here in council chambers, again at 5:00, the fourth Monday of each month, probably going for the next year and a half or so.
Okay.
So with that, looking for someone on council who's interested in serving and then we'll insert that name and we have a resolution for your consideration this evening with those, those members listed and an additional council member.
Okay. Anyone interested? I know it means extra meetings.
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
I'm interested, I think it'd be a great thing to be part of. There are a couple times that I might not be able to make the meeting, so I'm wondering if you would accept an alternate from somebody else, if they could fill in on days that I couldn't. I reviewed the calendar, it looks pretty good right now, but is that something that we could agree to or?
Well, I mean, depending upon how many, the, the issue with this is it's going to be hard unless you're not going to all of them and tracking what, what the conversations are and the recommendations. Consistency will kind of be key to this and I don't know, maybe if there's two that you can both come to and try to piggyback, because if you're going to have an alternate, the alternates can probably have to come to all of them too, you know.
But if you had two council people go and then one couldn't make it, then at least you'd still have another council person.
Sure.
So that might be the route to go then.
Sure, you just keep, yeah, keep, if you're going to do two, just, you know, plan on having both of you attend, as many of them as you can. It's not like we do with the planning commission where we can rotate in.
Right, yeah, that might be an option.
Sure.
Because I know I would have a conflict for a couple, couple of the meetings as well, so. Because I know I would have a conflict for a couple of the meetings as well, so.
It interests me, but the time commitment is a concern, and I too have some conflicts with some of the dates. And I didn't know if we could, I understand the reason for the continuity being important. I didn't know if there was a way that we could do it how we are doing the parks and the planning, because especially if you're the council person who's attending the Planning Commission on that Monday, it would be pretty easy to attend the five o'clock comprehensive plan meeting, but.
So can I ask Pam, which date, do you know which month that?
The toughest one for me would be the July twenty-fifth one.
Okay.
And then, trysta day, I wouldn't be at the community booth, because I'm running pig races, no curative.
Right, and really, it's what you'd want to focus on on the calendar is the steering committee meetings. Like trysta day, you know, the steering committee won't have to be part of that, and there's some other meetings listed there. It's really those steering committee meetings is what you want to hone in on, and, you know, that's where we'd be asking the committee to meet as a group. Those other ones, there's some of them are park commission meetings, planning commission meetings. You know, if steering committee members can attend, that's fine, but, you know, the committee meetings are what is important. And, you know, ultimately, the committee is going to be making a recommendation to our Planning Commission, Parks Commission, and ultimately you, the city council, to adopt this plan. So, you know, that's why it's important to attend those meetings.
Mayor, council, I'm going to be in agreement here with Mr. Abel on this. I, and to get somebody who's contemplating an alternate role off the hook, I think you're probably better off just appointing one person. If that's council member Pam, then we'll live with her absences, I would think, than trying to have somebody else come along and then, you know. I think the worst case would be have somebody show up and then you got to try to catch them up. While you're trying to get stuff done, and it's going to be hard to do so.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, you'll still get, you know, if you miss a meeting or two, you'll still get the packet. We can still, you know, you should still be following along, and we can fill, there's meeting minutes, you know, just, there'll be meeting minutes that you'll get. So, you know, you'll, if you miss one or two, it's not the end of the world. It's just, it'd be hard to rotate, you know, bring someone in halfway just to sit in, you know, in absence, not knowing how we got to that point.
Right. Okay, well, other than the July one, I would be very available, so.
Great, then, is the council on board with that then? Ms. Mortensen would be the council designee?
I'm assuming that the number you're trying to get here, you've got eight plus one more. If Pam does it, that's a total of nine, and I'm assuming their commitments have been pretty strong about making all the meetings that we're talking about, the people that are on that list.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, you're going to have an odd number, you know, you wouldn't necessarily want to even numbers should you somehow end up with a split, you know, in the recommendation, hopefully that's not the case, but that's why we came to the nine, it was based off of, we wanted, you know, a couple from our commissions, and then it was we didn't know what the appetite from residents at large would be. And we, you know, we got a good submittal, so that's good, and yet, so that's how we came up with the number nine, yes, is keep it an odd number.
And that's, you're comfortable, that's a good number, you like that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. You don't want it too big, and you obviously don't want it too small, this is good.
I don't know, a lot of something's different, but it's very unlikely that going through the schedule, same as what Pam mentioned, that you're going to find all nine show up at every meeting.
Right.
Right.
So that was why I was bringing it up, so, okay.
Do you think it should be larger?
No, I just, one of the things, and I was just concerned that the people, when they applied for the application, before doing so, they were aware of what is expected of them.
Okay, yeah.
You know, to be clear, and were aware of what was expected of them at the time.
Yeah, I was in, I mean, the commitment, we didn't have the specific dates and times or the calendar put together, but, you know, monthly meetings were advertised that they would need to be present for, yes.
That's my main thing, I just want to make sure we don't have people say, "Yeah, okay, I'll do it," and then half the time they don't show up.
Yeah, yeah, and if that's the case, we'll have to take a look at it again, make sure that we have adequate numbers there, so. Because definitely, we want to make sure. Okay, all right, so we have Mike Molitor, Peter Vickery from the Planning Commission, Gary Vars, and Patty DeKoski from the Park Commission, Mary Ann Hoppy, Craig Moody, Ralph Harrison, Thomas DeVoe, and from the council, Pam Mortensen. So your motion to approve these people as our steering committee members?
So moved?
Okay, Ms., in this, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Ms. Thol, signed up by Mr. Vanderlinde, to approve those members to our Comprehensive Planning Steering Committee. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So next, we are done with our business items, and we'll move on to our staff reports. Mr. Barone?
Yes, Mayor, council, I got a few items I'd like to discuss. First one is our new website is up and running. We had a minor glitch that the public may not have been aware of. On the first day, we said it was going to either go live Wednesday or Thursday, and it went live Thursday. What we needed to do, it's not super technical, but essentially, our old website address, if people had that bookmarked and they said, "Hey, I want to go see the new website," and they clicked on the old website address, it wasn't rolling to the new website. That required us to do some work with our domain name server company and a whole bunch of things, so. But it took twenty-four hours and we got it now rolled, so you can now click on the old website address as well as the new one to get to it, so. But that just wasn't happening on Wednesday, so we postponed the start till Thursday till we had that solution done. Second item is, what you did have on your agenda tonight, and I think what was promised by me was a, some information on reviewing our professional services policy. I know I had a discussion with Councilmember Vanderlinde last week about this a little bit. I'm committed to get that to you for a council discussion at our April fourth meeting. And then the final thing, just so you know, kind of a calendar item, I will be attending the annual Minnesota City Manager, City Administrators Association's Spring Conference. That's the first weekend in May, it runs May fourth through, which is a Wednesday through May sixth. And I'll, I'll give you some, something in writing on that, at a future date by email, just to remind you. But I'll be up at that conference those three days. I don't know, Mr. Abel, do you have anything?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, council, after our last meeting and the difficult item we had with Minneapolis Avenue, I just wanted to mention, I think, we assumed that council's okay with staff taking a look at our riparian view shed ordinance. It seems clear, the only thing that's clear is, it's not clear, I guess, is what you could say. Throughout the various meetings with the Planning Commission and council, there certainly needs to be some clarification on, you know, what the word adjacent means and all the issues we ran into with that. So just kind of a heads up, and I guess making sure, I'm seeing it looks like everyone's in agreement that it's okay for staff to go ahead and start working on revisions to that ordinance and language with our Planning Commission to make a recommendation for you, ultimately to change some language there. So we'll be working on that here in the future. And otherwise, we did reinstate their building permit. We don't know when they're going to start construction, or my assumption would be they're probably going to wait for road restrictions to lift. But we did reinstate the permit, and it sounds like, you know, when they can, they'll start construction on their new home there. So just the only update I have for you this evening.
The only thing I'd mention is, not only was the riparian view shed ordinance an issue, but it was also an issue because of the one house being built back so far. So we need to take a look at that as well.
Absolutely, that certainly was a concern of ours as well, and it was brought up on a few occasions throughout the process. So, yeah, we have some work and research to do, we plan on, you know, seeing what all the other Lake communities have in terms of their riparian view, and seeing what works and what doesn't work, and hopefully coming up with solutions for those problems.
And some may not even have an ordinance.
That's correct, yeah.
There was just one other thing, and I know you probably know this, but the timing was, it was tight, or there was questions when, when they paid for the permit, was the appeal process started when it was approved or paid for? And that, I think we need to draw a line on when it starts, because that caused some problems.
Well, yeah, correct, we can clarify, there certainly can. I mean, the way the appeals process is written, it's not written for the situation we were in or the scenario we were in. It's not what its intent was, we used what we could, what we had. So certainly, that is something too that we can try to define more clearly in terms of that situation and regarding a building permit, yes.
And the only other thing I have, I have one other item, is I may have our city engineer talk a little bit about frost boils. I did have a conversation with Councilmember Mortensen this morning. She lives on a street that's been kind of rather hard hit by frost boils, but this is not a new phenomenon for our roads. Here, it's been kind of worse than ever, I think, this year, because of the mild winter we had, and there wasn't frost as deep. But I'll let the engineer kind of talk a little bit about that, and there's not great solutions. There's some solutions, they're not great solutions, but this is not just happening here. In fact, Mr. Hornby showed me a couple pictures today. This generally happens to gravel roads, but he showed me a couple pictures today, other places in the metro, where it's happening to asphalt roads too, they're just kind of blown up asphalt roads, so. So, if you remember late last year, you know, before we had freeze-up, we had a series of rain events. And so it was very warm, moist, had a lot of rain, and then we had a hard freeze. And so we have all that moisture in the ground. A lot of communities are seeing the frost boils in a, you know, much worse condition than they've seen them before. There are some technologies out there now where some of the, especially county roads, county highways, are looking at putting drain tile systems, actually French drains, but a lot of them are vertical, so they can get the water to drain below the frost line. So they bore a hole in, numerous holes in the roadway subgrade, cover them back up afterwards, but they fill it full of rock. And the water can drain through there down to the subgrade below. That has to be done, in my opinion, that has to be done in the right location, because you don't want to do it in an area where you have a perched water table, because that pushes the water up, makes the condition even worse. So essentially, you probably all know this, but what ends up happening is the ground thaws from the top down. So there's a layer of frost about two feet down, probably go farther down than that now. You've got all that moisture that can't go anywhere, it's sitting on top. And so when you hit those low points, those areas that are prone to moisture, the road's weaker there. So heavier loads, repeated loads will pump the water up, and the subgrade fails, and so you end up with the boils. So that's essentially what's going on. What I can talk to public works about is trying to point, you know, pinpoint where some of the worst cases that we had to deal with are, and look at doing some type of French system, and there just is a trial run to see how it helps that system out. What we can, one of the things you can do, in fact, I was just looking at an article in another, in a county in another state, where they were just replacing the gravel in these areas, and you can chase that from here to ever. And looking at how much they were spending on gravel over a period of years, it was like three and a half million dollars. Replacing, it's not the only situation, but looking at some of these other alternatives are a good way to try to reduce that. You know, it might be a combination of French drains and some vertical bore holes, so we could, hey, I'll talk to the public works about that.
In the meantime, is there some way we can let our residents know about this, via our website?
We can certainly try, Mayor, council, we can certainly give it a try. You know, the website's been up and running a week or two now, I mean, we haven't had a lot of chance to kind of test drive some of the capabilities of this, so. I wish it was a couple of months from now that we'd be talking about this, because we'd be able to, I think, give you a quicker solution. But I'll speak with Cassandra about it, we'll see what we can do. One of the things we have is the ability for residents to click on things and sign up for things, but it's on them to sign up. And we don't have that in place right now, the templates there, we just haven't implemented it yet, it's still something we're working on. But maybe we have a frost boil sign up every year. So if you live on a road that's been something, you've got frost boils, we'll let you know if we see them. You probably know it before we do, actually, though, that's the problem.
True. It's a good name for it, because that's exactly what they are.
Yeah.
Describes it well.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, or anything from staff? Chief, anything? Nothing, moving forward with the trysta days?
Still moving forward.
All right, okay.
A question pertaining to trysta days, and again, when are we talking, it's less than two months now away. Who is overseeing or coordinating the whole thing?
At least of our. The public safety department.
You are?
Yes.
So as far as, like the freshwater church coming in with the booths, as far as people? I know last year, for example, there was, I think, there was some banks here, there was different organizations here that had little booths and so forth. So that's all being coordinated through you?
Yes, our staff, Amy Langenfeld specifically, is in charge of assigning booth numbers and so on and so forth. So our staff has been in contact with each one of the vendors, and then on the day of trysta days, they report to our staff, and they're assigned a number, and they show them where the spot that they're assigned to. So that's all being taken care of as we speak.
So if I wanted to have West Tonk Community Camera set up a display in booth, they should talk to Amy?
Yes, just have them contact the public safety department during business hours, and we'll be happy to take it from there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, very easy process.
Actually, I think there's information, it looks like no one there.
Probably is.
So if you go on the website, just look under events, it's right there.
So that concludes our staff reports, so we'll move on to council reports, we'll start with you, Bob.
You know, I really, I don't have anything.
Okay. Pam?
I have quite a bit, so I'm taking your spot.
You got it.
Okay, Pioneer Sarah Creek. I went to their meeting last week, and they are coming up with an ordinance for non-production sitting and manure management. So watch for this. Greenfield is working on an ordinance right now for their city, and all the cities, they're asked if they could see what Greenfield comes up with and use it as a base. I said that not all cities are going to use what Greenfield uses, and they all agree with that. So I think in April, the city of Greenfield will be presenting what they're doing, and then we can bring it back to you guys to talk about it. Very exciting subject. Let's see, in April, they are looking for any projects that we would like to submit to them. Is there anything that you'd like to me to turn in, I guess, that's something I should talk to you guys about before, I think it's April twenty-first?
Well, I did see what, before item six B got pulled from our business items, the Deer Creek culvert, I did see in there, isn't there something where it would involve Pioneer Sarah Creek, a wetland delineation for three thousand six thirty-four? And could we approach them for some help with that, since we've contributed generously over the past number of years and never requested anything?
We could talk to them about doing that, but I think there's another way of resolving that issue, so I don't think that'll be necessary to go forward with that.
But this, the culvert isn't a water quality initiative or program, so they have a policy that would stipulate that it would have to be water quality project. But now, when it comes to, there are a number of impaired water bodies in our city. There's Whale Tail and Oxyoc Lake, those are repaired, and eventually, in order to qualify for our MS four permitting, in our SWIP, we'll have to start looking at potential projects or water quality initiatives for those impaired water bodies. And that's something we'll have to look at for the future too. And then we could get, ask for assistance, so.
I did ask that question too, so, because I read that, and I was told it's road versus the other. There's a one-day workshop, if anyone is interested, it's on protecting farmland and improving water quality. It's in St. Cloud on April nineteenth, and I have a form that I will pass on to if anybody's interested in going to that. There's a cost of sixty dollars for a member and eighty-five dollars for non-member, so. Oh, camp, they talked about a camp program, and I, it's not the kind of... Oh, camp. They talked about a camp program and I, it's not the kind of camp program I was thinking of. Lisa kind of explained it to me today, but they're working on, trying to get some volunteers for Oxyoke and Whale Tail to start a monitoring program where somebody, a resident would take samples. Is it monthly, Lisa, or how often do they do
I think monthly, yeah.
And then they have to turn the samples in. So talking to Lisa a little bit about, she thought we could maybe run an ad to get a volunteer who lives on the lake, particularly Oxyoke because they're not, there's no access into the lake. Is that correct?
I don't think there's a public access. Whale Tail, there is a public access, so anybody that wanted to participate or do the monitoring could. And they get all of the things that they would need to do the testing and they also would get some training. So it's kind of interesting and fun too if you're interested. But we could put it on our website that we're looking for a resident on Oxyoke Lake and a resident elsewhere in the city to do Whale Tail.
That's it for Pioneer Sarah Creek. Moving on to Spear of the Lake. They are looking for volunteers, and I've mentioned this before, particularly people to be on the board for the marketing and their sponsorship. And so if you know of anybody or yourself would be interested, they are in desperate need of anybody. Their, their new website has launched or in the process of being launched like any day. And as regarding the parade, we did participate last year. And so I did talk to Turk Cars over in St. Bonnie and I reserved three vehicles. And so I told him it was two to three vehicles that we would need. And I guess I need to know of the council members, how many of us are going to be involved in the parade this year so I can lock down that number?
The date one more time?
It is July 16th.
I'll, I'll be, I'll participate.
I will be again too, although me and Christian Zing with Be My.
Okay, so you won't be in one of our cars?
Unfortunately, I'll be unless Christian's.
Okay. Mark?
That, that week, I'm normally out of town every year at the same time, so I doubt unless our plans change.
Okay. And Patricia?
I'm pretty certain I can be there. Pam, I've been planning on it. I've got an odd calendar that runs from July through June, so I don't know what my July holds at this point. So, but put me down, please.
Okay. So then Paul, you're filling out the form for that, so?
That is correct.
Okay, so it looks like we'll have two vehicles?
We have a squad car and then two vehicles.
Very good. I'll take care of the registration for us.
Okay. And then I'll follow up with Turk and get that. I'll send him an email and get that all locked down. Donating the booth, we have the booth because we are sponsoring, correct, $1,000. What do you suggest we do with that?
Good question.
Maybe, and, and we could take a look. I can find that out. Actually, I could probably find out tomorrow without a meeting tomorrow morning. I wouldn't be opposed of donating it to like Freshwater Church or, or.
Well, if we donated it to Freshwater Church, then there's other, other churches too.
I understand, but I'm just, that's just a suggestion of maybe a nonprofit organization or something I wouldn't be opposed of. I also donate mine, whatever goes with it, so.
Let's think.
It's just a thought. I mean, it's a, it's a thought. If we're not going to participate in it, it's kind of a shame. We paid for it. And if I was going to do something with it, I would do it and donate it to a nonprofit organization of one or another.
Well, we've had Freshwater Church speak to us today. We've had, is it River Valley?
River Valley, right.
Church also speak to us. And so, you know, it's, it's tricky there, but, but, yeah. Worth consideration.
Think about.
Yeah, we can, we have some time.
And I think I have one more. Pay Crisis. I met with Amy and Cassandra today and we are doing well on our sponsorships. So far, we have a little over $1,000 committed in money and I'm collecting prizes as well. So we're working on that and hopefully we'll get to our goal of $2,500 within the next two weeks.
All right.
Do you have how many sponsors so far?
So far, I think we're up to like 10.
10?
400 each, yeah.
Yeah, and the enthusiasm has been great.
Great. All right, great. Okay, Mark?
I have nothing.
There was, I know you weren't here last time, but there was a, a fire advisory board meeting, was there not?
Yeah, there was some miscommunication.
Okay.
I was, I went to the last one.
They didn't know, I've got a call in to Shane. He didn't know that I was appointed to it, so.
Okay, so.
I did go to the last one.
Okay. What, anything you need to report then?
Nothing that, nothing that really stands out other than the fact that there was some discussion pertaining to the district and, and neither Rick or Shane are too excited about being too involved in that. You know what I'm talking about, the district.
The, okay, there is, the mound is going to be applying for a grant that will pay for a feasibility study, if you will, on creating and what, what the study will show is whether or not it's feasible to, and what the outcome would be if a district were created. So this isn't creating a district. And all, all mound was looking for is finding out what other cities are interested in participating or supporting their application for this study. And there'd be no cost to any of the cities. We did speak to Mr., to Mayor Wyble on it. My understanding was that, at that meeting, that we spoke to him at.
He didn't sound like he was against it.
Right, so.
Right. Yeah, excuse me, Madam Mayor. He, Mayor Wyble was supportive of being involved in that study.
Okay.
So that's the, certainly the first step would be a, a commitment to be involved in that study. So mound was looking for their commitment and, and he did say they would be willing to participate if there were no cost, if it was a grant.
Right. So you're saying they were not in favor?
Wait, no, no, let me rephrase that.
Okay.
From a cost standpoint, yes, if there was no cost involved. But one of the questions that came up is, would that happen? Would there be a cost involved? Because he wasn't too excited about participating with cost if there was a cost.
No, there was no cost.
Yeah, so that's, that's, we're fine. It was, there wasn't a whole lot on the agenda, so it was pretty, you didn't miss a lot, Mark.
Good to hear.
And I think, I think the ci, our, our city did pass a resolution to support that effort. So I just wanted to make it clear. And we're not looking at creating our own fire department. That's not what this is all about. This is simply looking at options whether or not a district, and it would be a larger district, it would include Orno and Long Lake, I believe, mound. Does it include Maple Plain?
Madam Mayor, I, I'm not sure off the top of my head. I know it, the.
Loretto maybe is one.
They're certainly looking at the option of expanding it beyond just mound, Minatrista and St. Bonnie, but I don't think that's been defined at this point.
Okay.
So it's similar to 2012, but maybe an expanded outreach to it. Because in 2012, this was studied as part of the, we had a grant through the state fire marshal office. And it was, it was part of the police shared services, fire shared services, et cetera, so.
Yeah, I, I wasn't here in 2012, so, but. So anyway, okay, so we'll see what happens with that. And again, this isn't Minatrista wanting to create their own fire department. That's not what we're doing. I just wanted to make it clear. So, all right. Anything else, Ms. Paul?
Just a, one or two. I attended the Parks Commission meeting. Things with Serenity Hill are moving along. And other than that, I drove around to a couple of our, the city projects that we've been working on today and it was pretty exciting. I drove past the North Water Treatment Plant. That's getting built. Drove past the south. There were lots of big machines busy digging and people in green neon vests busy working there. I drove through Woodland and Cove. I hadn't been out there in a while and there are a lot of homes going up, a couple on the lake now. That's quite interesting. And they have their clubhouse in with the pool playground area there. And a number of parking spots, I counted them roughly, kind of driving by. And I think there were about, oh, 78 or something.
By their clubhouse, yeah.
By their clubhouse, which just gave me kind of a visual on what we're looking at for.
Lyle Park.
Lyle Park there. And, and then also drove over by, I, I should know, I apologize. I think it's West Edge where there, where there was a lot of erosion where, where, or there was kind of a delta down there by River, River Valley. What, what road is that?
Oh, you're talking about.
Is that West Edge?
West, uh, Morning View and.
Jenny's South.
Westwood.
Westwood.
It's, it's on the east side of 110 going north on mound. But anyway, a lot of progress there, it seems, with the kind of erosion control and that. So I don't know if it's done or, and that's the finished product or?
No, they'll be back to do the fine grading that they had a little bit more work to do up toward the road. But then they'll have more fine grading work to do. So the erosion control blanket was temporary. That's what the council approved with the change early, early this year. And they'll come back, fine grade it. You'll see that erosion control blanket back because they'll come in and reseed that. There's various seeds that they will be using. And there's a couple, there's a couple of different seeding mixes they'll use, so.
Okay, okay. It was, it was really neat to see these projects come to fruition that we've all been working really hard and investing a lot of time and energy and trying to do the right thing for the city. So that was real encouraging.
The one that is complete is the Trillium Bay one. So if you get a chance to go over there and take a look at that, you can see that. So that one is complete, so. So let's see, March 9th, I attended the Northwest League and that was very interesting because as is kind of the usual for this time of year, we had Jim Atkinson, who is the county assessor at the meeting. And I have a few stats if you're interested. So Minatrista added $44,070,000 in new improvements. $35,712 were due to residential. So I did ask him, and I haven't heard back from him, if he could break that out and tell us how much of that $35 million is new home construction. Because what it means is thirty, the 35.7 million is, includes all of the permits that have been pulled for the year. So he was going to get back to me on that, but the total improvements that were made in Minatrista is over $44 million. We had a net change of 7.7 percent. It's not the highest, it's one of the highest increase percentage wise. Orno had just a little more in terms of dollar amounts in new improvements because they too have had a lot of new home construction going on. But their overall net increase was less than ours. But we've, we've added a significant amount of, of market value to our city. So that was real interesting. And then also on, then on the 10th, I did go to the Gillespie Center Board Meeting. And we can also had an open house the very same day, the very same timeframe. And I was invited to that, but I can't be in two places at once. So I was at the Gillespie Center Board Meeting and I'll just share with you a couple of things that they're doing. Their date is set. They're going to be, they're working with the mound fire department for, for their CPR and AED Community Heart Initiative Training. So they'll be offering that at the Gillespie Center. The first event will be Tuesday, April 26th from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. And their second one will be Saturday, May 7th from 9:00 to 10:30 AM. So if you haven't, if you're not trained in the CPR and AED Community Heart Training, you have two more opportunities to do that. And then also in partnership with the Westonka Garden Guild, they're offering a couple of gardening classes. And let's see, and they're also going to be starting in April their Nordic Walking Program on Mondays. And the Alan Alma Boat Cruises will be going on sale. The tickets for that start in May. So those are some of the things that are happening at the Gillespie Center. I do have their profit and loss statement, January through February, that I will hand over to our finance director, Brian Grimm, so you can have that. They're a little bit behind right now and they said that's pretty typical for this time of year. And they're, they also gave a quick report on their facilities. They're in very good shape right now. And they also have a pretty good fund balance for their facilities once they need to replace roofs and so on and so forth. But this I'll give to you. You can take a look at that. And I'll have a couple other meet, and then next week I'll be meeting with Mr. Hornby and a couple of issues for the city. And one of the things I wanted to ask staff, when you bring back the culvert issue, let's take a look at whether that should come out of our stormwater or whether it should be road because it really is road, or whether it should be split. I don't think we should assume it's, it's stormwater. And I do know we have a lot of stormwater issues and not a lot of budget for that. But let's, let's just see which fund it should come out of. I want to make sure that it comes out of the appropriate fund. So, that's all I have. Anything else? All right. Then with that, we are concluded with our agenda items and looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.